So you got three of you over there.
Yeah.
I didn't know what town was the largest city in the US like revenue wise. It was like the 001 city with race.
Oh.
Race, race.
It's kind of scary, another element of the economy that made it the biggest city in the country.
Yeah. But it's a beautiful town. No, I didn't know there wasn't. Yeah, I didn't even know there was one there. No, he said anything to me about it. I would have gone. Would you have?
Not every event.
Yeah, they had crazy weather, warm weather was crazy. Brilliant.
Genius ice storm.
Yeah. We got up just as it started. We came back just as it ended.
All right, you cannot talk about your vacation anymore. You suffered.
Well, it was tough and I've never seen it so beautiful.
It was.
We have curtains and we have a small tree. I get it. Those red curtains.
Oh, that would be.
But my hair is.
Oh, yes.
I thought that was a neat picture.
It was. And it was tough on people. We were fine.
My favorite shows on. What? Never mind. Connections, we're gonna go. Will got a new cover for his laptop.
Yes, I did.
Whose picture is that?
An artist called Kyle Abow. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. It's a really wonderful painting. If you ever go to the Art Institute in Chicago.
Yeah.
Yeah, make a point of seeing it.
It looks kind of cool just from here, from a distance.
It's huge, so.
That's a different color.
When you stand in front of it, you feel sort of like you're there.
Got it.
Oh, you tell you just huge.
About as big as his laptop. No. Like a wall.
I'm thinking more like the map of South Dakota. Quite a square, but yeah.
Wow. It seems you.
I mean, I was traveling. Managing things.
No, you don't need me to help.
Our electricity backup. But nobody else does, so I've been.
I'm just not sympathetic.
Trust me, I've been working hard to get it back up before everybody else.
It's been horrible. We didn't have.
Oh, horrible. Five days.
Yeah, look at her hair.
Unreal.
What? Yeah, look at her hair.
I was wondering, she's got a new dude.
Yeah, it looks good. I like it.
My hair is super curly like that too, so believe me, I can relate. Like, it would be a disaster if I didn't have a plug.
Difference between a generator and not a generator.
Must be nice to have hair, that's all I know.
Yeah, there you go. I can't complain that way. I'm very lucky now. Oh, my gosh. But no, I actually contacted a friend at DTE and.
Because we're four people on that line. I mean, honestly, we're ready well. Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, they work 16 hour shifts. Anytime you're ready, well.
Yeah, I think these guys were from Kentucky. And they were from Kentucky and they were handed paper maps. So I actually.
Guess what? Sit next to you. I know, that's so sweet.
Brought up 10 pieces too.
You blushed the beans. And the residents.
I was actually more mad at the residents. The tree down.
Or you could make a third check box.
Like, you know. On, let me get an after our road commission. So last fall, we had a car totaled. An Audi by a falling branch on Craig Road while driving. Total. That's pretty scary.
What do you want off?
Make sure audio is on.
Um, no, because you're just viewing.
Okay.
You're just, you're not a panelist.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah.
I feel old though, trust me, buddy.
I didn't see my Cameras here.
Sixty-four, I feel.
Um, on Zoom right now.
Almost sixty-seven, actually. Yeah, I know it's.
A lot of warranty and no spare parts.
This will wear you out too.
I don't, I'm doing something else.
No, no, no.
Kathy and Will typically do because they like to see who's signing in, but now we have to. Signing in, so.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's call a meeting to order. This is the regular meeting, February 28th, 2023. We'll have a roll call and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Please call the board.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer. Glintoff, present. Brizo. Carrie.
Present.
Noel. Riser.
Present.
All here.
Thank you. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Of allegiance to the empire of the United States of America. In the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to a duction of the agenda. I. So I know there are some changes that people want to make. One of them. Our interim township manager has asked to remove item J two. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Um, so that's been deemed not quite ready for board action. So that's one change. And then.
I have another one.
Yeah.
If I could delete with your permission, as it is your resolution, J three. And if I could move J four, a similar resolution from new business up to consent agenda. As I suspect there is universal support for that and we don't have to spend too much time debating what. I think we've talked about doing in the past.
Okay, that's another change. And. And are there any other changes?
Under consent agenda, the contract renewal for GCSI, if we could have a discussion about that.
So you'd like to move that from the consent agenda?
Wherever it's appropriate.
Is that to new business then? I think so, yes.
Yes, I guess it hasn't yet been on on agenda. It's just been postponed. So yes, that would go to new business. So that would be after.
J one.
J one, assuming all the changes are.
Business will be J one, then G three.
G three.
And one other suggested change, I wanted to add just a brief discussion item under unfinished business to discuss the proposed fire services levy, just to get an update on where that's at. So that would be an I two.
Well, what I would suggest is that we discuss that when we are in reports because it's one of the items in reports, we'll talk about it at that point.
I would support Jessica on this because our reports are not really for discussion. They're for us to read, to facilitate the board meeting. So I'd rather really have an unhurried discussion on this issue. And it sounds like Mike Homier is here watching by Zoom. And he could be a part of that discussion because I think there will be questions on the pros and cons of the different funding topics.
We're with it.
Under unfinished business, under I.
There's a motion to add I two, discussion only, fire services levy.
All right. Any other changes proposed for the agenda? Seeing none, let me just review the changes that we have before us, before we approve them. The first would be to move item G three, the contract renewal for GCSI from the consent agenda and to place it under new business. It would be to remove, to add an item under unfinished business of I two, discussion only, fire services levy. To remove items J two and J three and to move item J four from new business portion to the consent agenda.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we have approved the agenda. Okay. That brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees.
Um, yes, they are included. As of, I think, Saturday, we've gotten many more communications. Some about the supervisor's report and many about the DTE outage. No included in that.
All right, that brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. We begin with those people who are present in the hall. And then we turn to those who are participating remotely who would like to speak during public comment. You got it? All right. So trustee Brizo will serve as our timekeeper. Three minutes per comment. Who's first? Please come on up.
Good evening. Name is David Spicer. 525 Baker Road. I have to comment on the proposed Boulevard at Encore at Heritage Woods. I believe that if the trustees allow the proposed development to pass and force the neighbors to the south to travel off M dot property, on private property, and back onto M dot property, it's unfair to ignore and disregard the property owners to the south. It's a bad precedence for the trustees to send to the future developers. Please uphold the letter of the law when it comes to my lever at 525 Baker Road. On your way home tonight and until the next meeting about Heritage Woods, please drive past your home and make a U-turn. So you can feel what it will feel like that we have to do. If you have a trailer in the next two weeks, you drive home, want to drive there's a quarter mile out of your way and see if you like that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eugene Cut. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Also, I'm going to echo what Mr. Spicer said about the Encore Heritage Woods. I live at 609 Baker Road, the property that runs directly to the south of the proposed Boulevard. If this gets approved, Heritage Woods would surround me on three sides. Boulevard's feet away from my kids' bedrooms. Beyond surprised that this project has gotten this far so far with all the preliminary approval with this board was based on the theory that we'd be able to come to an agreement with the developer and his team. They haven't really haven't put much forth other than here's your seven page Boulevard agreement. This is all you're going to get. This is how it's going to go. And that's just how it's going to, how it's going to be. We've not received any accommodations. We've tried to work with them. We gave them options as to what we wanted, what we expected. It had been mentioned that we wanted $250,000 an acre for our property. That's what was the asking price on the Boulevard property. That was the asking price on the Smith Farm. So the 250 wasn't just pulled out of the, you know, it wasn't just an extortion fee. It was, you know, based on that's what we've been asking or we've been under contract with for. The. Boulevard is going to lower our property value, manipulates the intersection that dictates future use of the property to enter my property. As Mr. Spicer mentioned, we leave M dot property, easement, go on to the private property of the Boulevard. Obviously, that would be granting us an easement and that would change the legal description of our properties. After leaving the Boulevard property, we'd have to go back to M dot property, wait for the light again and make a right into our driveway. To leave our driveways, it would be kind of hard to cross to, to, everybody goes to an intersection and nobody stops at the white line. I mean, if by theory, you know, that would be a great concept, but it's, it's not going to work. It's going to be a real pain to get out of our driveway and head to the north. Anything else goes on our property, this Boulevard limits our access to Baker Road. It's the only way residents can get in is to do the loop, the 180 comeback and make a right. If they put the Boulevard in, we have no, with M dot will not give us an access under our property for commercial intent. So it is the half-truth that the attorney had mentioned that we would have to use that Boulevard if we put anything on our property is true. It handicaps us to have to, have to pay usage and maintenance fees if this happens. Sort of, sort of sad that, you know, advertise a piece of property and that's the first thing that you could imagine.
Oh, man, no way. Three minutes? I had a whole other page, but I guess, I guess we'll wait for the next meeting. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
If I could stop this, that'd be great.
That's not for him, but they'll hold.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Jackson. I'm here to speak on the Harvest Grove project and I had submitted a video. Please.
You know, it is not showing for viewers.
Well, it's for the board.
Yeah. People at home cannot see it.
Okay, I should have about 57 seconds left because that's 203. But as you can see through those visuals, the most important thing I wanted to point out there is the flow of water that goes through that property and all of the water that the trees absorb and the land absorbs. It's a sponge. And I'm speaking today because we recently had a town hall meeting of all the residents of Parkwood Convent. And after all of the experts explained themselves and questions were asked, no answer was given for the rate of flow of the water you just saw. And so when they were talking about how they were going to mitigate the flow of water, they were going to design an elaborate engineering reservoir that was going to hold the water. And then it's going to release the water at the same rate of flow that we don't know what that is. And so I'm asking the Board of Trustees to find out what the rate of flow is now so that when we compare it with the engineering design, we know that it's a truthful design that will get rid of the water the way you saw it not getting rid of in nature's way now. And so we'd like to keep the character of the community as low density as we can. I realize that the property owner has or wants to sell. She has every right to, a developer has a right to develop that. But let's make sure it fits to the community, the character of the community and keeps that corridor of calm on Z road between liberty and power. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak?
Good evening, board. Kathleen Brand, SIO resident, speaking on behalf of SIO fiscally concerned residents. I just want to make a statement that going forward, we're going to be providing feedback on the extravagant spending by this current and prior, prior and current board in an effort to be responsible to the taxpayers. A good example is gross overpayment for outside consulting services for planning. When this could easily be handled by hiring professional staff, saving over $200,000 a year. I'd like to share some comments I've been getting from our group members. Thank you, as always, for your continued persistence. There's a growing call among residents, anyway, for a deeper forensic audit that will go back three to five years. Keep the pressure on them. Only good can come from this. Finally, amazing that this board continues to defy, defy SIO Township residents for transparent accountability. So in that vein, knowing that the Michigan Department of Transportation, of Treasury is going to be doing enhanced reporting on the finances as a result of the last audit and previous audits. We are requesting copies of that information that the state, the state is requesting, demanding from the township. Also, we are asking that the information to be returned to the state that SIO provides, that we'd also want a copy of that. We have members in our group skilled in accounting who can analyze this data. So question, who from the township will be providing these documents to us? That's a question to this board. Anyone?
This is hard. I know we've received requests.
When you get them, who will be providing that to our group?
I suspect that depends on the nature of the request.
So nobody's signing up to give us that. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Certainly, anything we get from the Department of Credit will be a document.
Yes, right.
I misunderstood your question. I thought you were asking who responded to the.
No, I want to see what we want to see, what the state is asking for and what your response is. So that's something we can get? Okay, good, because the other options, we do have other options. We could employ that, we could contact Carrie Vaughn from the state and ask for that same information. Okay, one last comment from one of our members. Thanks, Kathleen, for all your work. When I saw that a new residence is being built for seniors in SIO, my reaction was that if we moved, it wouldn't be to stay in SIO. I told my husband, who has been very removed from all this, and he volunteered the same thing, which surprised me. But that tells me how widespread the impression of mismanagement is. So these are good things to know what residents, taxpayers are thinking. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak?
All right, good evening, everybody. A couple of notes for me, just because I was going through the entire packet earlier and I want to make sure I had everything. First off, I would like to know more about GCSI's relationship with SIO Township specifically. I understand they're a consultant, a lobbyist. There was some talk previously about how Donald Lozinski's grant supposedly may have had some impact from GCSI. Beyond that, their standard contract and reps and warranties doesn't really say what exactly our goals and objectives are, just that we have them and they will do their best to further them. Not exactly a great contract. Look forward to Mr. Pratt's presentation, especially involved with water resources. That Parkwood video was rather damning. Office has had a large issue, even meeting our existing contract. So whether we look to fund that in a different way, whether we look to increase coverage, we have to see how they're going to act as our partner, if they're going to be able to step up, if we want additional policing resources or if we should even continue using them. Really need to do diligence around both of those questions. I'm happy to see that you're working to correct findings from a recent audit. Courage to board to make sure those corrective actions are taken so that way we do not continue to have problems violating laws and best practices. Finally, because I think this is going to be a little bit of a long meeting, I've got some chocolate for you all tonight. Feel free to have some. Anybody from the public is welcome to. And hopefully, you guys have a good meeting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none. Who's on deck? Are we done?
Sure. First up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan? You know, I'm having trouble here actually seeing the list of attendees again. I see we have 23 people here with hands raised.
All of them, their hands raised?
So one with their hands raised. Will, Kathy, is somebody else on Zoom?
No.
Not seeing the list.
So it's Will. Okay.
Yeah.
Let me pull, pull you up, Will. I'm going to make you a panelist. You can manage this. It's, it's literally. Let me know if anybody has any ideas. I can't even pull up Will's name to add him.
Try refresh. Jessica, can you do a refresh on the page?
Through the Zoom app, so I don't know how to do that. Not on the webpage.
Uh, well, yes. Makes it to rewatch too. That's option B.
Yes. Yeah, everybody joining from home, my apologies. I'm going to end the meeting and start it again. We've got 24 people joining by Zoom, so my apologies. I'm ending it and starting it again.